Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before you tonight is requests for a tentative and final approval of an amendment to the Marina Village Plan Development. The petitioner is LandCap Sparks LLC, who is here tonight, which would like to make a presentation on the architecture and some other details about the project. The applicant is requesting to amend the Marina Village Plan Development. The proposed amendment allows the Marina Villas and the Marina Square to be a maximum of five stories while maintaining the maximum height of 70 feet. On here, you can see, this is Lincoln Way, this is the Marina Lake, this is the Marina Villas building here, and this would be down in here is where the Marina Square is.
Does that mean it's a map? Do you identify with that? Is there any way to put that in the plan?
It's a map of the plan development for showing the entire plan development.
And it has a title Marina Village, Inc. Island, right?
Yeah, I use that one because that's the bigger site plan than the actual vicinity map in the report. Let's see, the current handbook has four stories, and so they're just increasing it to the five stories. The amendment does not change the total maximum area for the commercial restaurant office or residential use, which is at 416,000 square feet. The proposed amendments are to facilitate the completion of the existing unfinished garage structure. Staff finds that the plan development is in conformance or complies with the PD findings. It does not change the nature of the plan development. The amendment facilitates the completion of the Marina Village as a mixed-use project. The amendment would provide the developer the opportunity to change the number of stories from four to five while maintaining the maximum height of 70 feet. The proposed changes are intended to restart the development of the Marina Villas project, which has been stalled since the start of the 2007 recession. Given the substantial investment to date in this project, its prominent location on the Marina waterfront, and the blighting influence of the unfinished four-story parking structure, it's important to the community to facilitate the completion of this project within undue delay. This is also a request for a final, based on the findings for a final handbook. Staff has reviewed the final handbook for the Marina Village Plan Development, and based on the provisions listed in the NRS, staff is of the opinion that the proposed amendment to the Marina Village Plan Development is in substantial compliance with the tentatively approved plan, because it does not potentially vary the proposed gross residential density while allowing five stories than four. It still maintains the maximum height of 70 feet. There is no increase in the intensity, and it maintains the height, which does not change the overall bulk of the building. It does not vary the proposed ratio residential to non-residential. It does not reduce the common open space area. There is no increase to the floor area proposed for the non-residential uses or even the residential uses from the tentative handbook, and there is no increase in the total ground floor area covered by the building. Therefore, it's staff's opinion that the final draft is in substantial compliance with the tentative, and staff is recommending approval of both the tentative and final handbook. That ends my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, it's closed the applicant here. Would like to come up.
Thanks, Karen. Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Dean Hilliard. I'm with Green Street, local developer. I've been here for 25 years. We're partners in the deal with David Dahl and LandCap Partners, who we've all worked together for 15 years or more on projects, including this one. So, the exciting thing about this project is we're going to cover up a very ugly parking structure. And to accomplish what Karen just mentioned was, which was keeping the building footprint as it was originally designed, we went out and interviewed several architects, and we picked what we think is the master architect for this type of design, which is Humphries and Partners. They're basically the creators of this type of design, which is called the Texas Wrap, and they're originally from Texas. So, the existing parking structure sits right here, and what we're going to do is wrap this building around it. So, once we're built, which we want to do as quickly as possible, you'll be seeing this instead of the ugly parking structure that you see now. Part of the amendment to the handbook was to bring the color scheme and the materials to a more contemporary design. The original handbook is a bit dated at this point, which limited our colors and our materials. So, as you can see, we're bringing in a very contemporary, but still Marina-flavored color theme. We're also bringing in some elements of some corrugated metal, some wood accents and some stepco accents to really give it a contemporary Marina flavor. The color theme also has been updated, which is reflected in the handbook changes from what was originally approved, which was more in the yellows and oranges and things that we think we needed to change. So, the way this lays out, the parking structure again sits right here, so this is how you access the parking structure, which would be right through here. So, that's all you'll see of the parking structure, which will also be gated, and the residents drive in and access their unit, whatever floor they live on. The parking structure is five stories tall already. If they live on the third, fourth, fifth floor, they will have a parking spot on that level and be able to directly access their units without having to go upstairs or in elevators. So, it's a very unique and very efficient design, typically found in more urban areas like San Francisco or San Jose, San Diego. So, we're really pleased to bring this to Sparks. It'll be the, I think, the coolest and the nicest apartment project in all of Reno and Sparks. And we've done a lot. We've done over 2,500 units here. In Sparks, we've done, we did Villas at DeAndrea, the same architect, Humphries, did Waterstone out of Cuyahoga Ranch that we did, and Caveata out there. So, we're super excited about it. The project itself has tons of amenities for the residents. The ground floor entry here is a residence club, has a fully equipped fitness center with cardio and weights, leasing and management facilities, and then a very large residence club that'll have a cyber café in it, demonstration kitchen, a very large room that residents can use for parties and events. It flows directly outside to an outdoor kitchen, barbecue, fire pit element, and large pool and spa that is directly above the walking trail. It's four to seven feet above the trail and overlooks the lake. So, it's a fabulous resort-style environment that doesn't exist anywhere else in Reno or Sparks. So, we're very excited about it. It's 210 units. Again, the footprint didn't change from what was here before, and we're fully excited. But, like you mentioned too, we're changing the color theme on the existing blue office building, mixed-use building, to be similar to this. So, it's going to look more like this when we're done, which is also in the handbook change. So, I don't know if you have any questions, but that gives it a kind of brief overview.
I could still use that if you want. Return that one in.
Any questions?
Where's the lighthouse?
The lighthouse.
Real quick, I'd like to, since we're just doing audio recording, if you could just...
Oh, George, I think you call for a lighthouse somewhere. Was that modified last time?
We can pass one until I find my place here.
I think they were talking, there was a lighthouse on the project originally, which was, and I think if it's reading...
Okay, replace it.
That it's been replaced.
I got you.
Yeah, we are trying to add elements like this to give it, you know, that nautical kind of flavor, but we don't actually have a lighthouse.
All right, got you. Mr. Chairman, I might ask Karen, I'm really thrilled about this project, and I think with the developer it's going to be a first-class thing here in Sparks. I have a question, and I hate to nitpick, but on the procedure for final approval, it's various proposed gross residential density, and it's probably just the word that staff used. But, staff has reviewed the final handbook for the Marina Village Plan Development, based on provisions listed in the NRS, so and so forth, and you put "does not potentially vary the proposed gross residential density" while it allows five rather than four stories. "Does not potentially..." I don't like that word in there. Does that mean it might?
Um, no.
I mean, I want to see this from back. I want to see it fly tonight and then go through the city council, but I'm just a little bit worried about that potentially.
No, I apologize. There's no intention that to be vague about it. It will not.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted to know. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, Commissioner Lee, in the context of any motion or seconding that might be done on this item, why don't you clear that up in terms of the findings that the commission is making?
Okay.
Does that make sense, maybe? I can write it out for you.
Go ahead, that's all.
All right, this is a public hearing item. If there's anybody from the public that would like to speak on the item, please come forward, give your name and address, and fill out a public comment card. All right, seen none, we'll close the public comment, bring it back to the Commissioners for any other discussion. And please, again, just state your name, Commissioners, if you're good, before you make your comments.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment again. I think it's an excellent project. You know, I've been watching this for years. This from the building sitting there. I love the concept of being able to drive in there, park right in front of your unit. You know, it's beautiful. You know, I'm going to be voting for it because I think it's just, it's a good project, and it's time to start building again and getting things done in that way.
All right. Will Doug writes?
Writes up the...
Writes up the motion. Any other comments from the Commissioners? All right, we'll ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Thomas Lee, I'd like to make a motion. I move to forward your recommendation for tentative and final approval of a request for an amendment to the Marina Village Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 15011, adopting findings PD-1 through PD-21 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, except that the amendment as proposed will not vary the project density. Because the request includes final approval, the planning commission does not recommend that the city council require a bond at this time, as stated in the NRS 278A.490.
Mr. Sanders will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Next up, six one.
All right, good luck with your project, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, moving on to the second public hearing item, it's PCN 15010, Dad's Quick Mart Car Wash. Karen Melby presenting.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, could I ask for a five-minute recess?
Yes. So, we'll take a five-minute recess. We'll convene at 25 after.
See, this except for Barbara. Barbara did it right on and said her name, and the rest of us are not. I know. I'm not really good at these things, you know?
Okay, so next time I'll bring a satirical part.
Yes. Art say your name. For the record, my name is...
All right, we'll reconvene the Sparks Planning Commission for April 2nd, 2014. We left off at PCN 15010, Dad's Quick Mart Car Wash. Karen Melby presenting.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before you tonight is a special use permit to allow the establishment of a car wash within the Los Altos Crossing Shopping Center on 2.07 acres located at 5212 Sparks Boulevard. Petitioner is Dad's Quick Mart. This special use permit application is to allow for the establishment of a car wash. The property in question is, this is Sparks Boulevard, this is Los Altos, it's this building here on the corner. Currently, the proposed site is developed as a convenience store and gas station known as Dad's Quick Mart. The primary building, which includes the convenience store, consists of 11,162 square feet. The convenience store occupies 3,600 square feet of that building. The building is located on one parcel while the gas station is located on the adjacent parcel. The existing building was originally constructed to house a convenience store, the car wash, and also a sports bar tavern. The existing 3,362-square-foot car wash tunnel is actually constructed and is located on the south side of that building. Although the car wash tunnel exists, the equipment was never installed. The 3,600-square-foot bar space is also vacant. That building was completed in 2008, and due to the economic downturn, was never completed. The applicant is proposing to use the bar tavern area as their waiting area and like a little gift shop area for the car wash, for the people using the car wash. Let me put the site plan on here. That's the existing site plan. On this side here is where the stacking lanes will be. This will go through the tunnel, and then there'll be vacuums over here, and this will be the drying area. The two stacking lanes can accommodate nine vehicles, which is per city code. It actually exceeds per city code. There are 32 parking spaces on-site, which meets or exceeds the parking code requirements for the site. And the staff was concerned about the self-serve area, vacuuming area, about the customers emptying their trash, and so we've added a condition that requires that there be trash receptacles and that the site be kept clean. Based on that, staff is recommending approval with, I think it's five conditions. I conclude my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any question.
Questions for Ms. Melby? All right, is the applicant here? Would like to speak?
Hi, Derek Wilson with RoofCon Design Group, on behalf of the applicant. I don't think I have much to add. Karen's done a good job. The only thing I would point out is that the proposed use tonight is slightly less intense than the originally permitted use. There'll be a little less traffic and less parking, so it'll easily accommodate the proposed use.
Wait a minute, Mr. ... Derek, is that small control check, is that still going to be there?
Uh, yes.
Is that over there on the driver, drying side area?
Yeah, it won't, it won't.
The one we're gonna play with?
It's here with the stacking area.
Okay. But that'll still be there?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. This is a public hearing item. If anybody from the public would like to come speak on the item?
Don't know where, sir.
Seen none, we'll close the public hearing part of the meeting and bring it back to the commission. Mr. Chairman, ready for a motion?
I am.
Karen, I have a question. Karen, on the number one condition on the rule, it says the rule for the operation of the car wash...
On a 24-hour basis. And then condition three says it's limited to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
The full services. It should be the full service. The hours of the full service is restricted to this, but the tunnel and the self-vacuums will be open 24 hours.
Just want to, if that's okay with the planning commission. It looked a little contradictory.
Yeah, I could see in the body on page four specifically, you talk about Karen, that it would be, and I was, you know, that it would be 24 hours, but people drying the cars and everything, what I understand, when it's not daylight hours, it wouldn't be allowed.
We could add in the wording for condition three, that the full-service car wash, in front of the words "car wash," shall operate only between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. We can just add that in the condition.
It's up to you, it's up to you guys, if you understand it. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory now.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory now, yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay, ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the special use permit associated with PCN 152010, adopting findings S1 through S6, and the facts supported these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 5, as listed in the staff report.
This is Commissioner Sanders. I second the motion brought forward by Commissioner Camerota.
Okay, we'll motion a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, passes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to general business. PCN 15003, Silver Wing Development.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Do remember back in March, we had this item on the agenda, and the staff asked for continuation to the April 2nd meeting. We are asking tonight that we continue this item again until the April 16th Planning Commission meeting. We anticipate that the soil issues will be addressed by that point, and that we'll be prepared, ready to take this tentative map forward. I conclude my presentation, and staff's recommending that you continue to the April 16th Planning Commission.
Art, Commissioner Spurgis, a comment, as I see, I think needs to be in there, that they have waived their rights to the 65 days.
Yes, they did send us a note saying that they would, because NRS requires that tentative maps have to be approved within 65 days, and they sent us a letter saying that they waived their rights for that, the 65-day.
Not that they need to be approved. You were going to say that, weren't you, Doug?
No, I was going to ask if Karen included that letter with the records.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, we put that in the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, if that's all right, if you could consider that document added and submitted into the record by Ms. Melby this evening.
I was just going to add, not that the planning commission shall approve a tentative map, but shall either.
Approve or deny within 65 days.
Right.
It's a little.
I think I said review, didn't I?
I thought you said approve, I'm sorry.
No, I said, I think they have to review within 65 days.
Commissioner, for Ms. Melby, is this the result of the old gas station that was there? Is that right?
That's correct. Do you want John Day to tell you what's going on?
Sure.
Sure.
You know what, I actually, I mean, it doesn't matter, we can do it now, but in the future, this sort of questioning, because it doesn't really have anything to do with whether or not you're going to grant a continuance, would be better under comments from the commission. Just as a generalized point of order. I mean, nobody's here, so it doesn't matter tonight, but.
Do you want to put it under channel, Doug?
No.
I'm happy to do it.
No, go ahead.
John Marquinh, City Engineer, planning commissioners. We are, just bringing up to speed, so in the early stages of Silver Wing's work, as they did exploration around the site, they did come into contact with some soil on one of our properties that appeared to be contaminated with hydrocarbons. Upon notification, we hired our own consultant and did what is known as a Phase II environmental assessment. There is, in fact, a degree of contamination in a small area. There is no indication that it is in the groundwater. It is contained in the soil to a depth of about 10 feet. Earlier this week, I reviewed a proposal by our consultant to start the mitigation work. So, just for the commission's knowledge, you have to report such bills to NDP. They then assign a case, if you will. We have been assigned to Washoe County. They will be looking after our mitigation efforts, and will be the final sign-off once we get it cleaned. So, we're moving forward. The next steps are to spell out your proposed mitigation estimated costs, get approval from, in this case, it'll be both NDP and Washoe County. They'll both review it. Once we get a thumbs up on our plan, then we'll figure out how to do it.
Any more comments from the commissioners on this? Okay, we need to make a motion to continue to the next meeting, and if we could please put in the letter from the developer to Ms. Melby.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue PCN 15003 to the April 16th Planning Commission meeting, along with the letter from the developer that will go into the report, or the minutes, right?
Commissioner Sanders, I'll second the motion of my colleague Commissioner Lee.
Okay. We have a motion to second. Any more discussion? All right, call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, move on. So, now we have a public comment. This is for general public comment, limited to three items, but limited to the items that did not appear on the agenda, is limited to more than three minutes for each commentator. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Now, we'll move back to the commissioners for any comments.
The only comment I'd like to make is, you know, that we are anticipating that we will have a second meeting now in April. So, if you want to make sure that that's on your agenda. Yeah. You should have made that comment in the beginning, but I just remembered. So, and I think we will actually have a second item on that agenda also. So, we'll have probably two items on that agenda.
All right. Fantastic. Yeah. All right, so no more comments. We will adjourn the meeting. Thank you. You have a board?